Oh, and Jamie said she wouldn't be here today, or she'd like me.
Okay.
So you just have one. Right, and there's no, uh.
We sing it, you see there.
Yeah, that one, it's not even ready for today.
Okay, alright, so then we can go.
Like a discussion thing.
Okay. Sounds good, so we should be fine.
If someone else shows up, because maybe it could be also potentially scheduling a public hearing for it. Could do like, we could kind of get a good button down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I will. Call us to order then, it's been seven oh one. Um. First order of business, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, privilege of the floor, would anyone like to speak? We do have a public hearing for the ninety-one town line road application. Um. But otherwise, if anyone would like to speak of. Privilege, oh, yep, go ahead.
My name is Margaret Kurchkessner, I live at seventy-four. Um. West Jersey Hill Road, which is an adjacent parcel to the property. And I'm emphatically in support of uh. That young family that wants to build a home there, and I love the idea. That they've gone out, done something innovative to make it affordable. And it's a peculiar parcel of property to begin with, so. I just want you to know, as a representative of the neighborhood. I'm supportive.
Sounds good, thank you. Anyone else in the room? No, anyone on Zoom land, Rhonda? Sorry, I should have chose a different, I'm gonna move over. But go ahead, Rhonda.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say about the Colbert, um. Property, that I would like to see the open space be put in a conservation easement. And I wanted to comment that uh, the plan is. That those people who do put their land in a conservation easement with the town. I will get it some sort of a tax break, and so I wanted to point that out. But I feel that if they're going to be putting in these uh, houses. On the road, that the rest of the land ought to be kept to open space of some kind. Uh, permanently, thank you.
Alright, anyone else on privilege of the floor? Okay, then we can move on to approval of the minute from March. Anyone have any comments, or like to make a motion to approve the minute?
Make motions.
How about I can have?
Bertman?
Yes.
Okay. David?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
My.
Yes.
Oh, we're gonna change this time. She's not here. I'm abstaining, okay, I'm abstaining, because I missed.
All good? Okay. Um, town board, no, nothing to say today, alright. And we will move on from the town board report to. Our development reviews, so first up, we have ninety-one Town Line Road. Um, which tonight, we will do a. Review of opposition public hearing and consider approval. For the um. Development of the same family home. I don't know, if you wanna put anything on the screen?
Yeah, we pull back up again.
Okay.
Um, nothing had changed since the last time.
I don't think we asked for anything.
And I did let the applicant know, and we sent him a letter, so. And I don't, I don't have an email saying he wasn't gonna be here, but. Hello, he is not here. So, yeah, just. Town Line Road is right here on the left. And it's a very large property, and the plan is just to enter. Here. And as we saw those really neat renderings, we can look at them again, but just that they're. They're digging out a large area to pull their car under the home, if you go up on the site, they're past hide. You notice a shipping container up there.
Oh, that's the one now?
It's probably the home.
I didn't go back up since the first time.
Yeah.
It's on Town Line, you said.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. There's a white dog that comes out every time I pass by, guarding.
Is the shipping container intended to be one of? More coming in the future?
No.
It's just.
Let's wait, yeah, maybe we'll wait till public hearing, or if you wanna give a comment during that.
That box that's sitting there wrapped in plastic, come that property.
That's their home.
That's the home, and they built a driveway up to it.
Yeah.
Um. Did they get approval for the culverts they built and the, the storm? Channel that they cut down to the road from there?
Can, can we just stay on? Like, do the public hearing?
Yeah, do, do you have, do you have public hearing comments, is that what you're getting?
No, see, I missed the earlier meeting, I saw this one coming up in the. Town notes, and I got a flyer in my mailbox, so. Uh, one of the things I noticed is that they've, they've dug a fairly deep raw channel. Uh, down the hill, behind this. Box, um, perpendicular to the roadside, storm water channel. And. We've had some rain lately, it's already flowing mud. I just wondered if they've been required to any erosion protection, or anything along those lines?
Well, um, I, maybe. They would have if they had notified, notified us, so. They just walked in there.
Oh.
And let's just wait till public hearing, maybe to do that. Which is probably coming right up, but.
So anything else? Do you have the board? Okay, then I.
And I can pull up, and I can just pull up the larger site map, because it sounds like we might talk about that, but.
Sure. Okay, then I will. Open the public hearing. Um.
And.
And therefore. Alright, thank you.
Would it help to, like, we could angle?
I don't know, it's sorry, I'm okay. I can still drag it forth, that's alright, I'll get a swivel chair, and I saw it was sold.
But we might not have, we might not have the sitting down quite that yet.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. Okay, so I don't know if you. Cause you know more, what? I guess all we have is the site plan, right, that's all that's been reviewed in terms of the town, or have they also have permits reviewed in term for?
No, but, but if this is the time of public hearing, maybe we just take that again, since uh. Mike is here, and Mike, uh, oh, good, so.
Sounds like there was some question as to breathing, or trench. Digging some, something else, well, digging on the property behind where the container is. Have you, have you dug this?
Oh, yeah.
Water?
We uh, re. Um. Renewed old, old, the original ditch and swell that was there, cause uh.
Hey, Mike, you might wanna come right up here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, forgot about the speaker, sorry.
Um, we, we renewed the original ditch and swell that were there, um.
And is, uh, when you say there, are you talking about the southern property line?
Yeah, it's at the southern property line, um, because the, the original firm had. Broken over time, and, and so it was just. Water was coming on to the property and making. We're just renewing the original stuff that was there.
Okay.
Can we see where the swell was then?
Uh, we can try, I don't know if we'll be able to actually see it, maybe Mike can describe it.
Come up, who knows where it is.
Are you talking about kind of right back in here?
Yeah, it's that, it's the, the origi- there's the original, um. Swell was along, uh, almost the entirety of the southern. Property line from the, yep, right around up there. Uh, all the way down to the road, um, but we. Just redid the part that's uh. In that, um. Southwestern part, um, that's by the, the house area.
This is to the road?
Um. So.
Okay. And this gentleman has.
So does that extend there?
That ditch.
Area.
That's the, kind of behind the, behind the box, on the south side of the property.
Yep.
Perpendicular to the road.
Right.
Kinda deep, and it's kinda raw. And when it rains, it's flowing mud. So, has anyone talked to you about erosion protection, at least to seed it? To, to, to get some, something on those slopes of that there?
Sure, I mean, we can, we can get the, we can get it, we can get it seeded, um, uh. I was planning on having some, uh, riff rack or so brought in.
Even hay bills. Yeah, a hay bill is a, a very cheap way to stop erosion from going on down to. When you run, run down to the hill.
Sure.
Were they? Close to. A acreage of disturbance before, that it would? Uh, change anything?
No, it would just be like, uh, just a simple sweep, um, would, would be involved with that. And it sounds like some work has already been done, so maybe it's just worth. Just, just following up with, with Mike, just to make sure that. Yeah, some of those controls are.
Sure.
Not slightly. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I do have, um. Some things on order for erosion control that are. Tied up with all the shipping. Everything that's going on right now.
Okay, I assume that would be part of. Not, not, I mean, kind of our approval, but more on.
Mine.
Your and, and, yeah, and code enforcement, doing site visits, to just inspect that.
Right, yeah, so as part of this, if the planning board approves the home. Um, I would sign off on the ground disturbance form, and then that would go along with Mike's permit.
Yeah.
Uh, and then to, to actually start installing the home and everything, and so to ensure that those controls are in place during construction. There's no post-construction storm.
Right.
Controls, but. Um. But, yeah, it sounds like there's. There's new things out there that might just need to be taken a look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we just needed to shuffle some of that around to get the. Receive the container. We'll get some.
Okay. Alright, any other comments under public hearing?
Do my earlier comments count, or should I say them again?
You can say them again, if you wanna put it on, it'll be in the report either way.
I live in seventy-four West Jersey Hill Road, and I, my parcel, uh, goes deep in it, but it's theirs, I believe, and I. Fully supportive of their, um, I've been watching them with great interest as they've been busy like bees. On, on, on the property, and like, I think, yeah, yeah, one of the neighbors who lives underneath Newfield's side. He owns a parcel adjacent to yours on Town Line, he's been doing some. Stuff too, as well, and it's not just your parcel. Mister Grogel?
Uh, Jero, uh, he, he just, um.
So, I mean.
Yeah, he, he just had a, a culvert installed, and then recently, he wants to, uh, he wants to get some. Spring cleaning done on, on his forest property right here.
So. So it's. Not only, I mean, there's been activity there that I don't think it's all theirs, but I think that the idea of. Affordable housing in that property is just a wonderful thought.
Thank you. Go. Anyone else? Any other? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. And open back up to the board for. Um. If anyone wants to propose approvals? Or has any other comments or questions?
Not that fast.
Yeah. Or any? Measures to add on the approval, if there's anything? To be noted.
You've already noted about putting down the hay or something else, correct?
Yeah, we can put that, yeah, it, it'll be part of the, yeah, part of the stormwater, um, ground disturbance form.
Okay.
So, and we can. Um, to even just put it as a condition too, just to, to make it kind of all tie together, that.
Yeah.
Stormwater controls are just put in place, um, before any more site work.
True. Don't need to make that as a motion, bad that, yes, that was a motion, I made.
So are you making a motion to approve with, with following conditions?
Yes.
The conditions are.
That stormwater's, before they continue construction, they get some stormwater management in place.
I second that.
They'll be under.
Yes.
Oh, nevermind. Nope, I was gonna say, they'll be, they'll have dark sky review under their building permit, right?
Yeah, you wanna add that as a condition?
I mean, we usually do.
Yeah.
You wanna amend your, uh.
Yes.
Sorry.
I thought.
Still second.
It's become so automatic, that's added on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, that's, that's why. We'll be believing it.
Do you know what dark sky compliant lighting is? It's just an industry standard, if you just Google dark sky compliant lighting, it just means that the, that the lights are just downcast.
Oh, alright.
They're not polluting, they're not light pollution.
Yeah, if you just Google that, you come up with, uh, just, just a good resource of available brands and things that, that offer those, so.
Okay.
And that's pretty typical of, of Dandy's site interview, just to ensure that all.
Yes.
Our developments have downcast lighting.
Okay.
Just for clarification, because my hearing is bad. What lighting do you expect to have in there?
Dark sky, it's called.
Yeah, no.
Oh, it's just a.
Around the home? What, what lighting?
Um, for around home, or you can plan on anything.
What, uh, so what lighting were you discussing there?
Well, just generally speaking, if he didn't include, if he has any exterior lighting, that it would be that compliant.
Okay. So this doesn't involve going out to help into the business part of the property?
I mean.
I, he's not proposing anything, so.
Not about the business stuff.
This is just around the home?
Yeah, I guess, so.
This is, this is just for, this is not for the agricultural use of the property, but this is just for the home.
Right on, let me remember.
Yeah, the zone district just requires site plan review for citing of a single-family dwelling. And so, anything related to that, that the board can take a look at. But if it's lighting for agricultural use, board's not going to.
No, but the, but even the lighting around that new building.
Right.
It's subject to the dark sky.
Right, yes.
So.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, so there was a motion.
And I still second the motion.
Yeah, sorry, keep my mouth shut.
I always, I do kind of think it's all a matter.
Bertman?
Yes.
Holger?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
My.
Yes. And then do we need to give them anything, or?
No, then you will pass them along something in an email, so you are all set, and Mike, and then, um, we'll be in touch just with that. Approval for your records, and then follow-up, perform our approvals too. Great, and then, uh, have you submitted your building permit to Steve yet?
Uh, not yet, we're, uh, we're working with Javier, I've located him to finalize some engineering stuff before we get the building permit.
Okay. Great, so we'll just make sure this is all together with that, so. You're all set for Ben?
Good luck.
Alright, our next item on the agenda is for sixty Jersey Hill Road. Make a boy excuse himself from our board participations. Um, and has provided and updated. Their right plan. Was it proposed subdivision?
I talked to.
So we're looking at a new lot. A new house. Roads driveway. A development area. And then the open space.
Kind of wanted to switch some of that on there. Like, when we talk about credits.
Mm-hmm.
Two from this development area over. Into these areas, so it's not. Gonna be lost, you know, in the future, like, hundred years down the road.
What was their total, sixty or fifty, I keep forgetting, fifty-five, so you have. So are you proposing two, two, and one?
Yes, two, two, one.
Okay. So we.
Obviously.
Process-wise, that it would be. Noted on here. And then. Noted in the report. Is that what we, how we have to handle?
Yeah.
Documenting the development units?
Yeah, so any, any notations, any conditions like that, like number of units in the future. Um. Would be noted on the flat, as well as, there's any conditions too. Um. And then those would then go into an approving resolution. Seeker still needs to be done, so that can all be. Done at. Another meeting. Um, this was just. Jake just gave me this last Thursday. Um. We're a whole lot of time to.
Both.
Put too much else together, but.
So you're proposing. Um, three lots now, or is this one just? A development area, not a separate lot?
Not a separate lot.
Okay, alright.
It's still gonna be attached to everything.
Okay.
So nothing else is getting divided.
Okay.
Just the five acres, uh, east.
Okay.
I'll be stupid, shoot myself.
Uh, excuse me, I missed something a little bit earlier. Um, you said two, two, one, but there are only two lots. In the out, in the output, so exactly where are the development rights going, to which and where?
Ted, can I ask you please to refrain from comment, please, so the board can, can discuss this, thank you. Um, so. Before, when Jake was here a couple of months ago. The, where it was. Uh, discussed to create the development area, was that. Out of a fifty-eight acre lot. Um, about a ten, there's these five credits.
Mm-hmm.
That we're calling. And. The idea is that one of them is used for this one lot here, this proposed lot, the five acre lot. And then the other four would be in the developable area, and there's one already being used with the existing home. So essentially then, Jake is saying, there's three future units allowed in this developable area. And then in this open space area, it'd be none, and there'd be more of just, there'd be open space, passive recreation, agriculture, four, three things of that nature. What I'm hearing Jake saying now is. To. Uh. To have, to, to split some of those credits into the. What would be open space area, so it probably wouldn't be called open space area, but.
Right.
The back would be still. Um. So Jake's bringing up something different.
Right. So I don't know that it.
Is after.
Is necessary to define.
Yeah.
That developable area, if you, if we're not. Condensing unit to that particular amount of acreage, though it is under. Ten acres, so. I guess to that degree, then maybe you. Should, because it's less than ten acres.
Well. I'm sorry.
Though, that's all.
I'm just, so we. For Jake's application, we can ignore this. Extra. Line through. Can you just show, show? I don't know.
What? It didn't do.
Um, so now it's broken down, and the, right now it's a developable area, and the seven acres, but we're kind of ignoring that for today's purpose, right? Is that right? What you said?
That, uh, I don't know if that's what's being ignored, but.
But that's no longer the request, I guess, is what I'm.
Right.
Right.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
Except that it is more dense than a one and ten acre. But would he, I forget, is this one or two, where you'd be allowed one unit or two units?
Just one. Um, the, the five credits though includes the existing home.
Yeah, right.
And there's one credit being given to this proposed lot.
Yeah.
So there's really only three credits.
Right.
Left to.
Does it mean?
Doesn't, and the idea is that they were gonna be part of the developable area.
Right.
And now, what I'm hearing is that Jake is saying. He wants this elsewhere. Um. And so. It puts it back into the board to. And just decide if.
Can you refresh this, you just spoke to Guy recently on, this, this is something we can do, it falls under the cluster. Regulations, as long as we recover it. Properly, right?
It can still be looked at as a cluster subdivision, there's nothing that says that a two-lot subdivision can't be a cluster subdivision. Um. And, yeah, so Jake's proposing a two-lot subdivision, and. Uh. Having, but what you should do is. Have a plan, and that's like really where this balance comes out, because. If the planning board was just empowered to just weigh lot minimums left and right, but then what's the point? Um. So there's, then, then, there needs, through all this, I think the confusion is kind of lied in that. If the planning board is allowed to do that, there has to be some balance, because the idea is that the zone district is. One lot, or like a ten, ten acre lot density. So. I think there just needs to be ultimately. You know, I think there could be a lot of ways this can get shaken out, but. There needs to be a plan, and a proposal of a plan, that the board can. Say yes or no to, and, and figure out. Having the board trying to figure out what that plan is, is not the way that, that, that it can happen.
Absolutely, that's why.
So. I think you gotta just be, like, propose something, and if it doesn't work, propose something different. Um.
So that's what I'm gonna do, these two, using up, one more here, and everything off. I don't wanna have a conservation easement, the way it was breaking down, but what's gonna happen, it's just.
Can we, I'm sorry, can you slow it down again, so you are proposing, this is, this is your existing law?
Yes.
Is what you're saying, and this is the new proposal?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
The house offsets, everything are there.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Uh, new driveways set. Uh, offsets for future garage rating. And I just wanna, I don't wanna not be able, have my son be able to, if he wants to build a house on the corner. That's just not right. And everything going now, we're actually getting pushed, because now that. Home builder is saying we have to kind of get this settled, so we can get the house rolling, if not, gonna be an extra year and a half. On top of what is going on already, so. I know we've done. Similar things in the past, I don't understand, I don't understand why it can't be done.
I don't think it can't not be done, it's just. What are you proposing?
I just wanna subdivide that five acres off, and the rest of. You know, the four, obviously, the house is one of them, so the three. I'll use the one in the developable area, and two in this.
Proposed.
The rose. Uh, roadside, what's up?
I'm sorry, so. Development, in the proposed area, so you're just saying, or?
That's where the, that's what I wanna subdivide off that five acres.
Okay.
Surveyed, ready to go.
Proposed, okay.
So we're seeing two of the five.
Two of the five.
Credits online.
Exactly.
Do you have an idea?
Sorry, go on, go on.
Yeah, I know, you keep saying near the roadway. So you could propose that this development area. Kind of follows the brush line in the edge of the woods, and it just becomes like fifty percent of the site instead of the whole site. Um, or instead of the seven acres, whichever way you wanna look at it. Um. And say that's where the, the four, including the one you have now, are gonna be. Now, I wanna like, give ideas, but that would be one way, based on what you're saying. Now, I wanna like give ideas, but that would be one way based on what you're saying that I'm hearing you could propose. But I think my. Other thought was that he's all, if he's saying within what's identified as developable area right now. Would be the existing house plus another. That is still more dense. Than one per ten acres.
Yeah, I can get rid of.
So it would still, I think. Wanna be identified versus two. And all of the rest of the area would be less than ten acre, the what, less than one and ten.
Oh, I see what you're getting.
So it would be a different kind of designation.
Are you getting at that because if the developable area is showing a seven acres?
Yeah.
Oh, that.
It's not a subdivided area.
Right.
But it's more dense. Than your one and ten, therefore it would be annotated. Uh, well, I'm just saying, I think if that's what he's saying, it's gonna be, that there's gonna be two within that, that it probably should be annotated as that versus saying. Four on the whole thing, cuz that's different than saying four on that whole piece.
I think I follow you, what you're saying, but.
I didn't quite.
I lost the thread.
So. Let me just make a comment, then I wanna try to understand what you're saying. When a cluster division provision is used. Isn't it mandatory that some open area be defined? If open area is not defined, is it a cluster?
It's not mandated, but it's, it's part of. It's, it's part of, it's, it's why a cluster subdivision would be entertained in the first place is to preserve open space.
Right.
Dandy used to require sixty percent of the lot be preserved as open space. And it got rid of that provision.
Okay.
So now it's just, there, there's no requirement of any percentage whatsoever.
So then it's not a cluster. I don't see how it could be.
But it's still pending. I'm not necessarily arguing for it, I'm just saying this is. Don't worry, I, I'm as, I'm as equally frustrated as you of, like, it's. It's been. Basically, the planning board can look at it, do lots of revision as a cluster. But it should, it should, it should. It should have. Uh, something to balance that with of, of a very good reason why.
And Kelly, you were saying that. The total developable, developable area now is seven acres, right?
As, as we see it on the plan right now.
Oh, okay.
As it's shown right now, that's what that developable area is.
So that's what. Do you wanna have it go there, or do you wanna? Keep it like that?
The reason we did it, I guess. When we had the last meeting, we talked, yeah, I don't wanna lose out on this area or I future.
So, but when you say this here, do you mean before the brush?
Yeah, not building the woods here.
So, so that's protected, what about this open space area behind, which is field now?
Yeah, it would still stay, that can be defined as open space.
So we could work with that.
So along the road, you know, so I want to put up my son wants to build a house in.
So if we don't, so the developable, the, the. Current developable area also would, Jake would be. Just the five acres.
Would just be the five acres of proposed lot.
And that would be two. Two credits.
One, because I'm using one here already. So it's gonna be fifty acres, eighty three acres.
This, I was thinking that house is over there.
Oh, no, it's next to it, so.
Oh, okay, so one and one, so.
Everything is staying close together in the southeast.
Okay. I guess just. To, I thought, will definitely be wrong. With clusters, what we're doing is, so like a fifty acre lot, technically you could split that into ten. One acre parcels for houses, but we don't wanna do that, we wanna keep open space. So he gets five credits, it's fifty acre lot, but he's turning part of that into, it just stays a lot, and it's more dense.
It's fifty acre, he has five credits, not ten.
That's, I'm sorry. Yeah, 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 so, um. Right, so he gets five credits and they can, they're supposed to be closer together, cuz we don't want. Cuz that way there's less. And, and, you know, impeding on the open space, we want as much open space as possible. And so by clustering, it also means less tearing up the ground for wells and running electricity and all the other stuff, so I thought. I thought that's what the five credits were, and they were clustered, so I guess. What's? Wh- what is different about that, cuz that's what sounds like we're gonna talk about doing, so it's.
I know, but don't look at me.
No, okay. I guess I'm just trying to understand what, where's.
Close by the applicant of like, this is what I wanna do.
Okay.
And.
Yeah.
This is why it meets the, in, in making a case for it, in laying it out, so that the board can.
Okay.
Work with the applicant on it, I, I'm here to sort of, I can provide, you know, guidance on that, but.
Can I simplify it a little bit? So when I first did this, they got all messed up, I wanted, and I know we could do a two. Parcel cluster subdivision, cuz we did with David West. So that's what I was proposing, and then it got thrown way out of proportion with. Okay, you have sixty or fifty eight acres, how about the rest of it, as of right now, I just wanted to do those two. I have no future plans with developing anything else. And now it's getting into a cluster of just.
You know.
Cuz I came in, we've gone before, and even guys said you could do it too.
Uh, he, but he didn't, he's, he's provided a lot more caution though around it of.
It's, I know, but it's.
Yes, you can do it, but it's not, it's not just signing off on the plat and saying you're done. The planning board should think very carefully about when it do, does this, because. If people start coming in, in doing this, and then it decides no on somebody. There better be a really good reason to say no, and the planning board. Has complete discretion over doing this.
Full heartedly.
Even though it was done on Nelson Road, it could say we're not doing them anymore. But since November, the planning board's been saying, we're, we're open to this. Because there, there could be a benefit of preserving a greater swath of open, open land, it, it's the benefit. The comprehensive plan talks about it, using creative, you know, flexibility tools to, to, to meet these goals, so. It, it's still in line, it's just that there needs to be some thought into it, and, and there has been benefit in going through this exercise, I think of saying. Well, are you willing to? You know, leave eighty percent of your lot as open, and that's where it was left off last time is, yes, I am.
Yeah.
And then you, and what, what we asked you is that just make sure, check in with the family and kind of like think about that, and here you are, this, this is, this is fine, this is like part of the process. Um, and what we're hearing is that you're saying, you know what, I checked in my family and I'm thinking I want something different, and.
Absolutely, and that's why I wanted, I was hoping this was gonna be good to show. I mean, we can keep the back open space. Just trying to.
Would it work, this is just a s- suggestion. Would it work to say, to start with the open space, the space that you feel very comfortable would never be developed? Could you define that?
Yeah, let's feel back here, this is open space.
Okay, so what if that's defined, then the rest is cluster. Can we do that? How much, I'm sorry, but how many acres, I guess, first of all, is, is the open space?
Yeah.
Area.
He said, says approximately that.
Yeah.
Um, so I just wanna answer your question. Yes, you can do that. I, and, but I, I'm just saying that in like theory, like yes. No, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the planning board then should actually look at it when it's drawn out, cuz right now we're only seeing a part of the lot, so. Where does that developable area go down West King Road, where did it stop and where did the open space get defined? Then, then, then you should ask that question again, are we okay with this?
Well, I think we're trying to work with the applicant, and so. Starting with the o, in this case, starting with the open space is maybe not a bad way to do it. Get that sectioned off, and then the rest is developable, and then we'll just look at it and see how that works.
And I don't know. How others feel, but I don't. Cuz I know surveying is expensive, I don't know that I. Have to see like an actual annotated. Property line kind of designation for that's available area either, if, as long as it's noted with some kind of. Rough boundary and an approximate acreage, like I don't. There's no actual ha- houses being planned and the rest of it right now, so if it. You know, if there was kind of a rough line that's followed the tree line and it had approximately fifteen acres. I don't know if others feel the same, but I know we've done that on other properties before, it's like. As defining the developable area without it being.
Right.
Such a, like rigid.
Within the developable area.
Right.
So, am I hearing that you're comfortable with just a demarcation between the definite open space area? And the developable area?
I am, I, I don't, if everyone else is comfortable with that. I'm just saying, like, I don't think you have to go out and put pins in the ground and.
Right.
Like. As long as we have something that is maybe a, a. General reference and a, a approximate acreage so that we can compare open to. Developable, and at some point in the future, they'd be able to say, well, if the time it looks like it was. You know, generally following the road at, I don't know, seventy feet back or something to that effect.
I would say that on that, those, the developable areas defined by just computed points, so pins weren't set for that.
Okay.
So I think at the very least.
I think it's also a little confusing and that it looks like a subdivision, so I think that's also partly my reaction, is that like right now the designation also looks like you're subdivided.
They could use different line types.
Yeah.
But. Wherever the, wherever the, I, I think just wherever the demarcation is. It should be shown, and so if it's now going to be. In an area that's not shown on this current diagram, like if this.
Right.
If this line goes. I'm just hypothetically saying, all the way over here, over here to where it bends around.
Yeah.
That, that should be shown.
Right.
Um, and then we can understand what is this area now, and then what is this area now?
Right.
Does the board wanna give? I guess, I guess, um, I'm thinking are there other, before sending Jake back to the drawing board, are there other? Things that you know that you wouldn't be comfortable with? Like if Jake came back and showed, say, I'm just hypothetically saying, he showed.
Twenty percent.
Five percent of the lot being open, you know, like, like where, where in your mind might be something, or is it really just going by hydro?
Yeah, I guess I'll just say we're looking at it, just what we have in front of us, and we do follow that brush line into the open space. I think this is very much aligned with what the town wants, we'd be protecting this open field, farmland. Um, and then allowing development with less impact on the open space.
Right.
So. I guess, yeah, I guess kind of back to what Kelly was saying, do we, do we need him to come back with a new survey in order to? Move forward, we have had applicants. Just kind of mark stuff up on their plot, but they've, they've had, it's been a little different, I guess, like, I don't know.
The planning board can wave having a full survey. Um, and that, that has happened, I think, the majority of times that people have come in here, at least that have been here. They just showed the lot that they're carving out, and then.
Kind of drawn on that, yeah.
The planning board seems to have been fine with that. I think though, if. If a. If there's a designated area. And in this case, the entire lot has a designated area. Of, of, of some kind. Uh, or it sounds like this development area or developable area, the line might. Be along this, and it's gonna go somewhere over here, it seems like it should. Follow the field edge and go, and, and, and show it going to the road, it wouldn't be surveying the entire lot.
You have the old, the old line that had the whole property still?
I don't think it, it never showed the whole property, that was one that I made.
Oh, okay.
These are computed points. Right here, th- this corner pin, yeah, these are just computed points, so I think it could be a matter of the surveyor just zooming out a little bit, and. Um, and just do that, these pins are set over here on the proposed lot. Those pins are set.
Okay.
And that one's an assumed pin, I think, for iron pipe found, it looks like. Does that make sense, I'm, I'm just saying that if, if the developable area is shown, be going off of, out of view. It might be a little confusing to people in the future.
Yeah.
So we're, are we suggesting? Just to show that?
We're suggesting that he has to show what he's proposing.
I can have that line across there and have it ready for the final, I mean, if that's what. Would create a final, with that for the board, I will have it done tomorrow.
I assume it's approximately fifty percent.
That's what it looks like, I'm trying to guess.
Yeah.
I get like about fifty percent of the lot.
So with that where the case would. We'd be comfortable with that at fifty percent.
I think that's a good question. And it looks tricky, cuz there's no right or wrong.
Yeah.
All right. Then you get into. Setbacks and the kinds of things you were talking about with the credits.
Right.
You could or you don't need to.
You don't need to, but the whole. Um. Point of the, of the zoning. Was not to have two acres, a lot, two acres, a lot, two acres, a lot, two acres, a lot, so you can address that. With setbacks and distances between houses, it wouldn't be any. Wouldn't be any constraint on you developing it at all.
I mean.
But if somebody else.
Ten acre lots.
Pardon?
With the credits available.
Yeah, yeah, we're just saying, all I'm saying is. You, you start up with the premise of fifty percent developable, fifty percent of the lot developable. Or whatever the size is, we just have to also make sure it's not. Uh, down the road, houses, that's all, and that can be done easily.
I don't, I don't know if I agree with that, like, I think. I, I know there's that, the, the idea of. Um, keeping the, you know, keeping the rural view from the road, but I don't, that is where the infrastructure is, that's the least impact to have. It against the road. I mean, I don't.
And if it is really half.
Yeah.
Just making an assumption, if it is half, and it's there for approximately twenty five acres. And you only have four credits over twenty five acres, then you're already over five acres, even if you do just evenly distribute them down.
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point.
And so as the town, we've still protected. Twenty five acres from being carved up.
Right.
Although if it's a cluster, you wouldn't have to see.
No, you wouldn't, I mean, you could put two next to each other on the end, and then, yeah.
I guess if they're really clustered tight, that's good, if they're spread out, that's good, we just need to avoid. The sweet spot on that, the unsweet spot on that, that's, that's not good field. That can be not.
And we can.
I have the old one.
Well, and, and it's also the, uh. In the impetus behind the zoning to. In the intention of the zone.
If we approve. The developable area. Then, if he comes back and, which it probably won't be, cuz your son is not little. In two years to build this house out, then would we, would he come back to us? To review that application for where the house goes?
That can be a condition as, as, as approval, and that was done for. Um. Dan Huff and his program Bruce Hill.
Okay.
Uh, was that. Or no, it was, no, I'm sorry, it was a, that he just went through site plan for the. For the actual development area.
Mm-hmm.
This is combining the plat of the one lot being subdivided. With development area, and so that can all be done, if you wanted to require them to do site plan review for it. You, you could, it can also just be done, as I noted in my staff memo, that it can just be done concurrently with the final plat. Um. If you wanted to make a condition that said. Uh, the citing of new homes is subject to site plan review, I mean, actually, in the zone district, it is anyway.
Oh, that's true, cuz they're still in zone one, even though it's already approved, developable area. Not that I feel like we have, I, I don't know if I feel like we have to look at every home or not, I was like, then. Not that I feel like we have, I I don't know if I feel like we have to look at every home or not, I was like, then, curious.
By using this plan, they'd have to only develop on the developmental area of the proposed lot.
Right, which is the icing, he'll he'll come back with a revised one.
Right.
Because right now, it would be just this area and the proposed lot, that's seven acres.
Do you understand what Jake's proposing now?
Where, I guess, where's the? Where else are you gonna add a house?
I'm sorry, I guess I thought. Yeah, it it's confusing because because um. Jake submitted this to me last week, but since then, he's. He, what what he's proposed, what he's talking about right now is that he's. Is to modify this so that instead of this line being here, it might run more along this hedrow.
Okay, the whole way. So then the developmental area, development area would be that, that.
Right.
The development area would be what you just showed, and the open area would be.
No, so the open area.
What area in the field is that?
Because that would be open space now, and the open field would no longer be just an open field.
Yeah.
I think so.
What I'm hearing that Jake is talking about was. Is that this is what he just submitted.
Right.
But what he's saying is, instead of this. This line would kind of fall somewhere down here, and then the road bends up here, so you'd have to show that. Wherever it comes out, and to say, you know. This is the open space area back here. Uh, and this is the all there, that's what I'm hearing is a.
And how much of the open space do you have rough guess of what that's gonna be left?
It's a good portion of that one.
So we're. If you don't know that, so Gavin is curious.
But we're guessing the open space is half of.
But even with the expanded area, it's still only five houses, right?
Yeah, you'd only be able to add three on this area.
Yes, a cluster subdivision doesn't change the amount of. Um, houses you you have, it's, it doesn't change the density, it's just whatever a conventional subdivision could allow.
So, okay.
You have it pull up like the whole.
I think it would be helpful, yeah.
All right, let me let me do that.
This is.
Yeah, hopefully you can pull up.
So our action today is is still just discussion and requests for the final plot, right?
Right.
To declare or. Do you plan a public hearing, what is the word?
A, whatever that is, where we say we're gonna have one next time.
Schedule there. Declare.
Uh, and it gets, that's great, I thought the. Purple line showed a little bit cleaner. Um, it don't look that great, um, but yeah, I'm gonna turn off the imagery just for a minute so you can see. Parcel lines are these purple lines here.
Hmm.
The house is right here. And, um. So I can impose at least.
The building area would be along the road, right, following the road.
It sounds like what I'm hearing is, right, is Jake, you're saying to to run it along this.
Then everything else helps, so it's about fifty percent.
So this, this area would remain as open space.
Would the house, the houses, again, you can do that however you want, are you thinking near the road instead of way back?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, my son's four, so.
Why not opinions? Okay, so.
All the opinions, but they would change drastically now and then.
Right, I mean, in some senses, there's already houses across the street.
Yeah.
So it's not, yeah. And then. But I don't. I don't know how that kind of ruins the view as much if it's already houses on the other side, and to me, the more open space. Again, building it close to the road, less. Tearing up stuff and running, running stuff. Kinda makes sense.
Who knows, one day it's sold as one lot, I don't know, like, you never know what happens in the future.
Right, I know, I get that.
But then again, we're, we're preserving farmland.
Right.
Well, not real, I mean, if this, if. Is this, I mean, thi- this is active. So, so it won't be preserved.
Got it.
Whole back half would be.
I think this is clearer than we've seen this previously, like I have a better understanding of what that one's asking for. I mean, I think it works, but that's my opinion.
So basically, going back to the trees, though, would be. Like the lots, basically the building part, I mean. Like that open field.
To build anywhere in that open field.
Right.
But the maximum number he can build across that whole open field is three houses.
Right.
This is developable over here.
And two credits would already be, and that's just all three houses.
Yeah, three in all that space, where across the street, there's one, two, three.
I guess it's just depending on how. Would you still have control over all that, though? I mean, like if you, you said, if you're still gonna hate it and stuff, like.
I'm just doing this so I can subdivide the five acres off and give it to my cousin, like everything's staying whole.
Okay.
He doesn't have.
He's not subdividing.
I'm not subdividing any of it right now.
I'm actually sorry, I mean, I guess like with the housing. Because they're not gonna be as clustered, if they're not as clustered enough, they're not near the road. Then it goes, you build it back further, then you have less land to. Kind of do farming with it.
And I don't know if it ever will be built, I.
Okay.
As it stands now, if they are to be built, they'd have to come back to us to build.
As the zoning. Yeah. And we can put a condition if we thought. There is the risk.
Yeah, it's so much. Question that was just literally one place for now, who knows?
I don't know, I want to be there.
I mean. Yeah, I think next, I'd be ready to make a decision by next month, be able to.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd just, I would like to see the lines.
Right, right.
There you are. Whatever's on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Look deep in thought, like you want.
I know, I thought.
I just, I, well, I want to. It it sounds like the. If if Jake came back with those lines, or wouldn't there might not be. Any perfect change from that, or. Uh, because then seeker review would happen. You could hold a public hearing after, you you could schedule the the public hearing for next month.
Yeah, are people comfortable with moving and that much next month inside a public hearing?
Yeah. No, I think so.
I am.
Okay.
It's still get discussed then, and we'll have the new.
Yeah.
You know, for some reason, if the new document gives us this, looks totally different or something, then.
Follow that cut through.
Right, then. But I don't, and we'll just be able to see where the road goes and all that, so.
I know, but I do have what the acreage is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I will make a motion to stop public hearing for next month then.
I'll second, oh, go ahead. Yes.
Over.
Uh, I'm staying.
Uh, Kelly? Yes.
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 Yeah.
I wish on something like this, this stuff could be different shades or colors or stuff, so that is. This is my. Not see in some ways, but. Yeah. So thank you for going back and putting, doing this, because it's clear.
Yeah, I see what they can do.
I don't think they count, yeah, they're being that way.
But this, yeah, this is helpful.
Do you wanna take the comment?
Um, I suppose Ted, if you want to comment, I just don't wanna spiral down a whole other passive. Cluster reveal again, go ahead, Ted. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Um, I I've been listening to this last half an hour, and it it's been. Very confusing, which I'm sure you appreciate, I've heard the confusion in your voices as well. Um, and I think that a a a possible lesson to be learned here is that any material submitted. Maps, especially surveyed maps submitted to the planning board should, number one, include the entire parcel. Number two, if there are any descriptive markings on it, such as there are on what was submitted with this. That should be the proposal and not changeable. In during the meeting, except, you know, by discussion. But here we have a map that was just coming in, and it was not what was really being proposed. That's, that's what I have to say, you know, you you have, I think that the vetting process before materials are presented to the. To the planning board could be a little stricter. Save you a lot of time, thanks.
And just to comment on that, as I said, that Jake submitted this last week. And it came tonight with, hey, I thought about this a little bit more, here's what I'm thinking. So as my staff memo reflected, it's, it was. Insistent with what the board had talked about two months ago.
Go ahead, Joe.
I have a a lot of problems with the way this is going, um, and I didn't, didn't give me a chance to comment, we commented earlier. The, the subdivision, I'm using clustering, requires that the cluster be separated by. Was it six hundred feet from other residences? If you, if you create the possibility of residences along the road, that wouldn't work. Um. And and it's only because you're trying to use the cluster subdivision provision in order to create that five acre lot. Uh, that there's even this, this whole roundabout discussion about how to, how to. How to make a square peg that didn't around hole, the. The intention with the separation distances was so that the, so that the cluster would um, be. Uh, would 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 preserve more open space. And the intention also was that the ten acre lots would keep the road from being lined with, with houses with, in smaller lots. If you do a cluster and you spread the hu- houses along the road. You've subverted the intent and you're back to where we were before we did the rezoning. Because we had with the, with the, with the road frontage requirement in in the previous zoning. Um, the back acreage was essentially undevelopable and was on, was was open spaced by default. Um, it was, it's too, too expensive to do that, where the infrastructure is along the road, it's where people tend to put the houses. Um, the, the, the separation distance with the cluster is what was, were were assured that there would be some. Uh, undevelopable road frontage. So, um, you know, the, if you consider those lots along the road as part of the cluster. It doesn't satisfy the separation distances, you got all those houses across the street.
Yeah, and I was thinking that, but what, what it would mean is that the new houses. Could be cited within six hundred feet, the lots can be cited within six hundred feet.
Right.
We're not approving.
Right, you're not approving. Right. So if the houses, if if a house was proposed in that area, would go through site plan review. And because it's part of a cluster subdivision. Um. It would be. It would be required to be, the house would be, to be six hundred feet from the home across the street.
Which the new one is now, because I know we talked about that last time too, with the one across the street.
You mean the the proposed?
The proposed one.
Um, we have, we don't have that measurement, one of us, but.
Okay. I thought, for some reason, I thought it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that it that, that it was now, so I just assumed, and I meant to ask, but I forgot. Because we talked about that last time too, was that separation distance.
So I think then that's a question, then, just for you, Jerk, it's, understanding that. Those homes across the street impact the sighting of any new halls.
No.
I mean, yeah, if you have the. I mean, it might be helpful for the surveyor just to, I guess you could already see the measurements with six hundred feet out. And I guess maybe to see the proposed home that distance, but we could see that on the survey, right?
We can't see the the existing homes across the street on the survey, because they don't go across the street.
Oh, right, I'm just thinking from the road, yeah, okay.
So a quick question, a couple months ago too also, um. The six hundred feet was covered in the circle, I do remember that, but you also read that it's up to you guys' discretion and change that a little closer, the six hundred feet would. Ultimately. Take away open space from that five acre property, is that still.
Right.
About the same, that we're gonna be on the side, we love that houses.
I think we determined that it was.
As you.
In the zoning, but not. Because it was specifically in the zone. That it was required as part of. The process, because it's within the, it's in that zoning law outside of the cluster law.
I I was just curious, only because. I'm, I'm based off of, I don't know. Either way, so. When everyone brought that up, you know, that six hundred feet puts that way away beyond that pond even. And I know you brought up my three acre website, it wasn't said that was one hundred percent here description, and it is movable. Closer, also much preservable in space, so I wanna make sure that's still on the table, not. Three quarters of the way back in that field.
It's, it's definitely modifiable if it's, if it's in line with, with, uh, you know, the the intent of a cluster subdivision.
I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say, like, I was. Actually thinking that and trying to decide about it, just jump in, because it. It it. I get, I guess, the character at the same token, if I wanted much land, just open land, then. The more I push the houses back, the longer the driveway, the longer, I mean, the less kind of open field together. But.
Yeah.
So, I was already kind of having that question.
Yeah, I mean, this is, if you, if you ask people what they prefer to keep. This is a debate that always comes up, but.
Right.
Do you cite a home deeper into a lot to preserve sort of, you know, more habitat up front of the road? Or do you, you know, want homes sort of closer to the road? Which can feel sometimes a little suburban if, you know, that, but you might preserve a deeper habitat in the interior of the lot.
Right.
It disturbance, it's. Again, I don't think that there is a right or a wrong way, it's just. Right, I think there's, there's arguments for each.
Yeah.
Six to one, half a dozen to the other.
Yeah.
And a lot of ag properties. The house is near the road, and then you have all of the ag.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think like someone was saying earlier, if you push the house way back from the road, then your likelihood of. Doing ag in front of it is probably less likely.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would.
And that's definitely. I've seen kind of what. How houses were years and years ago. They weren't. The house I grew up in was, right. Seventeen, something, so it weighed. The house was closer to the road, or because of. the house was closer to the road or because of what it takes, you have to do to put in a road, but also what it takes to get to the road.
Right.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's going to be more expensive, just building costs, but more impact and even just one maintenance and like in the winter, like it is a kind of, I, I don't really understand. I don't understand how that's protecting us, Dambie. The distance back. I mean, I, I guess visually, but.
Fortunately, it isn't. So I'll just put this up here.
Yeah, your whole front lot is 600.
From just taking a random house across the street, 600 feet is.
So cut down the woods and put out.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it is, you know, it, it is the, this latest proposal of calling this the cluster area.
Doesn't work.
But technically.
But it also means anything in that 7.6 that's proposed right now doesn't work either.
I mean, if, if the board felt, I, I don't see any reason, I'm not saying this is the, the best proposal again, because it's, it can be debated in a few different ways, but if the board felt that this 600 foot standard, you know, it, it needs to be reduced, that homes need to be required along the road in order to preserve this back area, there could be an argument made there. I'm not necessarily saying that's, like, you want to go down, but with this class, with doing a cluster subdivision, you, the, the board can just look at modifying certain standards in order for the benefit of the underlying intention. And in number one, the intention is to preserve open space.
Yeah, but also not develop all along the road.
Well, I, I think that's debatable, but also this, we have so few farms in Dambie and this is an active farm. Like, I think that that's something to, to look at is like, to the point, if we go back, then the front yards won't be farmed.
So was that not in place for the houses on the other side of the street?
The other side of the street is actually a different zone district. It's the low density residential and these are odd, they're all, they're not even conforming, actually. They're all like less than an acre. Some of them are half an acre. They're really small lots. And.
I mean, it's nice having all those trees behind it and stuff, so that's a good thing, but it's like.
It does look different.
Why do they get, and but then why is it okay on there? So I don't know.
I'm sure we could find, we could do, we could go back and see there, there was, uh, I know that this property, that case, the all one lot, and I think maybe over time, they might have just subdivided up here, but I'm not sure.
Well, it's like your road and Gunderson Road, and the houses are fairly close.
Yeah.
We've got lots of stuff behind us between us and the new solar farm.
And it feels rather suburban when that happens.
But some people choose to live in that situation, right?
Yeah, I think.
What's the point of zoning if you're not going to?
Wait, mute the conversations outside of us?
Yeah.
So that we can talk.
Well, I think that's.
What were you saying? I'm sorry.
Well, just, yeah, I was, I was actually going to agree with Joel that, right, some people choose to live in a suburban setting, but the, this zone district is Dambie's, you know, you know, one of its most rural zone districts, the intention is to keep it as rural.
Miss here.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
So now somebody can create a little suburban enclave in the zone district that they have the acreage and, you know, if Jake was proposing, I want to build four homes in the next couple of years and, you know, make a little cluster, you know, that would be something that, that is allowed in Dambie zoning, um, to do that.
But if it already has those other houses that are so close.
But it's not in the zone.
It's a different zone district.
Different zone district, but.
Yeah. What's ironic is that the, this zoning across the street from Jersey Hill, across from Jake's, is the same zone district, rural one, but they are all non-conforming. There's one acre lot, there's a six acre lot, five acre lot, three acre lot. So actually, when you look at the map, a black and white map of the proposal to create a five acre lot, it is actually very consistent with the pattern of development that's along this road.
It's along both sides of it.
Well, and I think also part of Jake's argument is that, not that he's going to necessarily line all three up, but that he might want two at the far end and two on this end, like it just doesn't, he just wants flexibility for an unknown. He's not actually proposing where those houses are even going right now.
And I think that's the challenge at hand, is that there's not enough confidence, or at least, I mean, maybe the board was sort of finding confidence with, where this was heading, but there needs to be something that, that the board feels confident in.
Well, what if we put a stronger stipulation in the site plan review when the houses are built? Or in further subdivision? I mean, if there's some way to just kind of beef that up that we relook at it, I mean, I guess we're still, I guess, maybe now the argument. Nevermind, I don't know.
I hear what you're saying, but yeah, I mean, if it's, but if it's going to be that the 600 is in place, then it's, then nothing, you can't build on it.
It is what it is.
Right.
At this point, yeah. Just think when we look, I mean, especially the satellite view, it just seems to me that just seems like, oh, that's, that's the least impactful spot, like is towards the front, but.
I would say the opposite.
Yeah.
Whereas difference happens.
Mm-hmm.
I think if, if, as long as the board just provides good enough reason of why this can be approved as a cluster subdivision and a cluster development proposal, and you're very clear on, you know, in the supporting resolution of why it meets the intent, like that, that's, that's the important part. Is to, is to not just say yes, approve, but really getting a very good reason.
Why we made the decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but just approving it doesn't mean we're saying where the houses are. Approving it, that it'll follow the stamp, like the rules that they're written in the home. Correct. I mean, like, we can approve it, but then the 600 is not, we don't have a say with that, right? We're just saying, yes, you can build a cluster in your property. We're not saying where you can put, I mean, are we, are we allowed to say, yeah, we know what the zoning rule is, but we're going to rerule it? Even. We, we got this. Thank you.
I thought we did have the discretion.
I have the discretion, but if and when a house came to the board for this area and that applicant was told, there's this 600, it's part of a cluster development, and you have a 600, you know, you can't say within 600 feet, they could apply at that time to have a variance.
Then are we saying Jake has to simultaneously go for a variance for the new house?
Oh, so that's for the one.
No.
No, for the proposed lot.
The proposed five acre lot.
Is that one? I mean, there's how.
Yeah, he was saying if it.
It'd be good to see the distance, um, from that, like where, where the new home is cited and from the lot of, from the house across the street, just to understand the distance of that.
So the 600 feet is both the ones where there's the houses there and Jersey Hill the other way.
Yeah, it's any, it's any primary structure outside of, outside of the cluster subdivision.
May I chime into this silence?
No, we're, let us, let us work this out, please. And again, we can still prove, open the me, I mean, do the public hearing and it'll just, you'll have some stuff to think about too, you know, I mean, with, with what we're seeing now, next steps, so I think we gotta look at it, because again, proving the cluster is okay, it's just, if he's saying, but yeah, I'm going to build a house here, then it's like, well, maybe not. Right? I mean, if it's just about doing a subdivision and clustering, it, it fits right now, correct? As long as there's not a house put on it that's within 300 feet.
600.
600 feet.
What is okay?
Like to do this up, basically set it up with a cluster and like what he's talking about doing, just not with putting any of, but just not building. I guess what Denny can't.
Nobody's asking to build.
Right, that's why I was saying.
Right now, it, it will have to be discussed when that occurs.
Right, I guess that's what I was kind of saying.
And it's, it never happens.
That part could move forward, but.
Because on the five acres, there is a house being built, it's basically on order, ready to roll as soon as this is done.
Has that one been measured out? Like, do we know what that is compared?
No, that's, I mean, to understand the distance of that would, would be good.
We have it drawn out with the offsets from the property lines and everything, the driveway, but when we left, it was reiterated that it's up to the planning board's discretion, the offset of the house from our own, or from the other house, is how it was left.
Okay, so we probably need to check that.
If there's a good reason why that, that dimension should be modified, if there's, if it's a, a good reason for the, the cluster subdivision proposal.
So we just need to justify.
I think it keeps the, keeps the open space open, I mean, and it. I mean, to me, that's a good reason.
But it, it's clear this is, this is not an easy proposal here. If the proposal had been a 10 acre lot, it would have been approved long ago and you probably would have been putting up the house by now.
Yeah.
And so it's asking for something different and asking the board to look at it in a different way. And with that, the board asked for a little bit more forethought into thinking about the plan of the property. And that's what led us here to this plan, which is then, which there was decent agreement about what was being shown for this meeting, and now it's being proposed to be changed again. And so rightfully, there's a little bit of, it's just a little, you know, there's, if you're feeling a little uncertain, that's completely normal. Yeah. Yeah.
And still, I'd like us to make some progress at the next meeting, like it would be nice to get, we've been working on this application for a while ourselves, and I know you have things.
Right.
That are lined up, so it, I, you know, would feel better if we had some more clarity as to like.
Okay, the other line on there, probably will help.
Right, but then that, that new question, if, if the zoning saying you can't build within that line, then what is that doing? And is that still what the application is?
Does the board not feel comfortable modifying that? Then it doesn't seem like there's comfort there. I don't know if it worries in your mouth, but I'm, there's not a, it doesn't seem like a resounding support to modify that, that 600 foot rule.
I personally think, I, oh, sorry, I don't think it's helpful. I think it's, it's hurting our intention of
Yeah.
what we're trying to, to do. This is the open space in my view of it, but.
Was, and it was 600 from any dwelling on any other.
The town. Definitely. This is the town zoning.
So that up a little bit. Yeah, it doesn't make any sense. 600, there's hardly, there are probably very few places where you could put a cluster, cluster in, that you wouldn't violate that, so.
Right.
That's maybe something we should do.
We could go like smack in the middle of what we're trying to protect is what it seems like, you know.
Yeah.
Well, the expectation you're going to do a real cluster with, you know, you can have several small lots, all 600, you know, clustered together. 600 feet from other.
If you put all four right now, next to the existing house, you'd be within 600 feet of another house.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And they, these are, these are.
Potentially, or I guess if you put all six, if you put three next to where he's proposing the house right now, you probably are within that 600 feet, so like our, even our original cluster plan.
Yeah.
Was questionable
Right.
with the 600 feet, unless we say that because it's a cluster, that rule goes away. I think that's, I, I'm just unclear that if, if, if the cluster rule overrides the 600, because they're not.
Because it's, the, the 600 is part of the cluster rule.
That's right, that's right. I didn't have in front of me, but yeah, you're right.
But can I propose that we override the cluster rule?
You can't.
Override the law, because then they would have to go to BCA.
I was just asking.
Yeah. And you can't go to the BCA, only the applicant.
I don't want to hear Ted. I actually was asking a great question.
I don't think there's many places.
Do we have, do we have discretion to override the 600? The, as, as the planning board, not as the.
Board, does that have to go to BCA?
We looked at this last time.
I think I have it.
Cause I, I thought we did, I, like their, their recollection about that where the house is, I thought when we looked at that, we.
Yeah.
When we're looking at a cluster, we have more discretion than we typically do under those, you know. And I understand the intent of it, but if it doesn't, if the intent doesn't really apply to the.
I don't think there's many places you could go in Dambie and stand fairly close to a road, draw a 600 foot radius and not hit another house. So the rule's kind of patently absurd on the face.
I mean, right.
That's 1,200 feet.
Yeah.
You're saying. Yeah.
I, I just was, want to know, you know, how much discretion do we have? And, you know, I get that it is, like, what the town decide, which, you know. I, I don't like it. I don't think it, it works very well, but it also is what's on the books right now. So like, what lay lay and what, I mean, do we have, I mean, truly the, the ability to make this property separate or somehow not, not have to live up to? That's where I'm kind of stuck at is, you know, if that is what the zone is. Yeah, I don't agree, but it's what, I mean, what options are there?
It's why we have a cluster subdivision committee looking at all changing the rules.
Well, that's my other hangup. If there's all our discussions in subcommittee that.
Can you conceptually consider the other houses across the road as part of the cluster? Like, I know they're not, but conceptually.
It's creative. I don't think so.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, that is, it's true.
It could have Jacob Almond.
Away, so if you are moving up the.
Yeah.
Rule, then you're conceptually creating more of a cluster, you know? Yeah.
It, it is creative. I, I think there's, there's two things that I think that, no, it's not, it's not part of the cluster subdivision, so, so no. But, but that might be a reason that it. But, but that might be a reason that a planning board could use to say.
It's conforming.
There's this dense group of housing across the street, and and having houses on the other side of the street in a clustered similar fashion is beneficial, um, for all these reasons, and they could lay that out, and they could make a, yeah.
Compared to trying to put four across from where there's open wood, or well, not open, but
Yeah.
oh wooded property across the street.
But it hasn't already kind of lost the character, I mean, if one half of the street has it, I mean, is it like, this doesn't look very.
Yeah, but then.
Suburban at all, as long as you look this way, it's not suburban at all, I mean.
Right, but then if you keep, if you keep pushing that, then like, then you run out of rule one.
Yeah.
Right.
But if we have discretion to say, that's already there, and we're trying to keep the open space.
Yeah.
Why can't we do?
Because if they weren't, but the funny thing is, if they weren't there, then he could do it.
Right.
But because it's like houses.
Technically go cut this at ten, ten acres, ten acres, it's still built. Okay, six hundred feet, I mean, it just, it wouldn't benefit the town as much as this application was. So I don't, I don't know.
So and why, why would we be prevented then from
Yeah.
using our discretion, which is why we're all here.
Yeah.
To do what is logically better?
Because I guess the rules.
I think that, I I think that's debatable, Joel.
Yeah.
So.
I I only say that because if if the planning board finds that it's in the if you read the laws, there there, they do encourage, they they allow the planning board to take the zoning law dimensions, measurable dimensions and modify them, if they find that there's a benefit for the town, as far as, they're not increasing the density, they might be able to, maybe it is better to say that six hundred foot rule, yeah, it can work in some portions of the property, but requiring all this to be cited actually in an area where there's a similar development pattern might actually be more beneficial. I'm not saying that's the way the planning board should go, but there is an argument there that that can be made. It's tricky because it's almost provides almost like too much flexibility, where I think there's the guardrails in this case can be set by the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the plan, again, the planning board could just say, we're not entertaining this as a sub- cluster subdivision, period, end of story, in the, in the, in could have said that at the onset, and that's just the policy of the Dandy Planning Board, we're not doing this, we're not, that's
Yeah.
period, but the, that wasn't, that wasn't the delineating line, that the the planning board seemed willing to entertain this because there might be some benefit, um, and opened the door up to allow that, and asked the applicant to provide a little bit more information for a plan. There was an agreeable plan put together, and now it it's sort of opened back up again to this discussion for that, um, to find out what are we, what are we, what are the planning board more comfortable to do?
So going back on what I thought, so if we didn't do a cluster, and he just did, like you said, ten acre lots with a house on each one of them, would it still have the six hundred?
No.
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 So
You're good, Seth.
I mean.
This is why we need to change the rules.
Exactly. I mean, it's like.
Can we just?
I'd rather have them clustered in a more open area and more
Yeah.
field than to tell them, no, you know what you need to do, just go ahead and split it up into, you know, ten acre lots and do whatever you want, I mean.
Sure. So why don't we just say, you know, we'll, we'll have the developable area as it's gonna be shown on the map next meeting, and then can't we put some language in there?
Of course.
Just some general language, if we say. You haven't heard the language yet.
House is about to be less than ten thousand square feet?
No, something about, you know, in accordance with the the features of the area or compatible with, just some nice language that will give the planning board twenty years from now. You know, language that can say, okay, well, that that will give them some flexibility too, they can say, well.
Well, the nature of it's already there.
Well, there is a lot, but I I think that.
I don't know, I I mean that there's already those houses.
Exactly, yeah.
So we'd be able to say, in this particular situation.
I think that.
This is what makes sense, and.
Yeah, so nobody's disagreeing with the delineation of the.
And we want to keep the open space the better we can, which is
Yeah. And it's making pro.
What we wanted to do, so I don't I don't understand
That's.
why we can't get through this, at this point.
So I, so what what would be helpful now, since we're, since there seems to be some searing in a little bit, um, because I'd like to put some things in writing. Um, I'm 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 hearing generally there's support or Jake to subdivide off this five acre lot, and there's, you know, with that is defining a developable area. Um, and I I think what I'm looking for are what are the reasons that that, that that area is better, um? You know, we we can, we can develop a I guess it'd be, it would be good to, I'm a little like, sort of, kind of tongue tied here.
Nothing, it allows it to remain agricultural, I mean, because they couldn't.
The agricultural aspect of the
Right.
property, it conforms with what's already existing across the road.
Yeah, right, put that in our, yeah.
Limiting site disturbance, I think we've talked about that a lot.
Yeah.
But just to know about the agriculture piece, is that that is the area that is
that feel behind, I could have, right, I gotta plant it next year if I wanted to.
And then, and then in the open areas, woods.
That's it, too, that's woods.
Right, so we wanna cut down trees to build stuff, and we don't wanna go over the stuff we planned.
So, so keeping the, keeping the the forest patch intact.
Yes, very much, that's important, I think. I think having.
I don't know if it's old growth or not, but if it is, that'd be more.
You mean potentially having a planet, a plantable field that.
I mean, it's a bit larger, it's.
Right.
So, I mean, to make the forest better, cause it's some nasty trees in there. Something thirty years ago, and they left some really.
Okay, so I've taken some notes about, there's a density pattern across the street. Um, keeping agricultural land intact. So when I think about that, I'm thinking the homes would probably wanna be sited as close to the road as possible.
Right.
I think that's what we're thinking, yeah.
Or dense to each other, and then the more, and then open, a larger open swath in between. Like, it could end up that two houses end up on four acres next to the woods.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, I mean, we can't predict exactly what people might wanna do.
You can't predict, but
But we can tell them.
Or it is in a position to, to.
Say what it should be.
Exactly.
Like, no cutting down woods. I mean, the other thing is, like, if you, you know, you build back, you go into that field, now you're also making a driveway, and an oftentimes paved driveway, and now it's impervious, and it's, I mean, for water runoff and all that other stuff, like, I don't think that's good either for the land or for the town or anything else, like to.
So having less impervious surface.
Yeah.
Less ground disturbance.
Especially with the rains that we've been getting.
We had some hard rain last night.
Yeah, it was.
What, why else, I'm I'm just, I'm fielding, cause I'm, I just wanted to have these notes here, and it's good to have them too, just in the discussion points.
Yeah, I don't know if it matters, but smaller lots are more affordable, they're more affordable, they're easier to maintain, so I mean, it, I don't know if we're supposed to care as a planning board, but it is.
Well, but but the area in general needs affordable housing. More affordable housing, right, that's a big deal.
It's in the, it's also part of the comp plan, yeah. And I would say, like, the property already has natural delineating features that kind of subdivided, which is what we're try, drawing the line to.
Yeah, sure.
I think that's what.
Like, we wouldn't have just randomly drawn that line down the middle if there wasn't already a tree line in place.
So what their, what the plan is, it's the area.
Like that, too.
Or Jake wouldn't be drawing the line there, I should say, because we're not drawing the line.
Across.
Doesn't that help?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, good start. Um, hell, I'll probably work with you on that.
Okay.
And if we wake up in the middle of the night with a, which tends to be what happens to me.
Yeah, that's what's always welcome.
Write it down.
Here and everything that we voted, write it down. But I'll have updated map.
We're just writing these so that we
Yeah.
have them prepared ahead of time, that we are, maybe already have a draft.
That happens, so it's, we're calling.
Yeah, I'll write it down.
My phone's on, squeal, on, not, do not disturb, but I'm usually up till eleven thirty anyway, so.
Yeah, it, the, what I'm trying to drive home here is, is that with this exercise, it's, there's so many possibilities. We got the indication a long time ago, and, you know, just the confirmation that you do a one-off subdivision and call it a cluster, it makes it just a little not as easy to see it.
Yeah.
Like, if somebody took all their potential lots and then clustered that, that's very easy to see.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So by starting to entertain this, it just gets a little bit more, there there's a larger task at hand, which is why is this better, and can we plan a little bit further into the future for if and when the the remainder of the property is gonna be proposed to be either developed or subdivided, and so there could be a lot of ways, those areas are delineated, I think it just comes down to really being very clear and having very good reasons about why this is the way that the board feels comfortable with approving this, this scenario. So I've jotted down a few, um, I certainly, I I think because public hearing is set for next month, and this is gonna be come to the board for um, for consideration, you know, assuming Jake is gonna come back with a redelineated area, um, and uh, it would be helpful if you think of other reasons or other, or even other questions about maybe how it doesn't work. Please, please do email them, because as you can see, this is not some easy cut and dry thing, and maybe it was done that way before. But I think that's a very slippery slope, and I'd like to, as staff to the town and the planning board, I would like to make sure that we're not just sending one-off subdivisions to the, to the board and calling it a cluster, I think there needs to be a little bit more of a, of a real concrete reason of why it's it's a better proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I'm gonna call it on the development review. Do you have any other planner report items?
Oh, okay, um. Yeah, let's see. Uh, we're finally gonna get some proposals for the crosswalk out here, um, I talked to another engineering firm today, they're gonna submit, so we'll, we'll see a couple of proposals coming in. Um, the town awarded a beautification grant, which is exciting, it's small, but it's just to dress up the gazebo out here. The planner boxes add some plantings in front of the town hall here, as well as there's a message board down in West Dandy, uh, that Joel built a long time ago, and that's gonna be refurbished. Um, so if you know folks that wanna help on volunteer projects, that would be great, you know, help on those projects. Um, let's see, the Design Connect, uh, project, the student project, that's looking at a redevelopment, just a conceptual redevelopment of the Dobson property. There was a meeting here last Wednesday, about thirty people showed up, um, it it was great, I, the students, I think, got a lot of feedback, I think uh, people provided. Yeah, I think there's lots of feedback from them, um. Personally, I was a little bit underwhelmed with the proposal, I thought they could have pushed it a little bit more, they could have proposed something a little bit more, so we'll see when they come back. May fifth, the town board meeting, they're planning to present then. Um, oh, something that might come to the planning board next month is a proposal for a rezoning. So I hadn't gone through one of these with Dandy yet, I think the last time might have been the solar farm rezoning. This is for a property on Hornbrook Road, right next to the highway property, right before you turn in. So it's, uh, it's, it's owned by the, um, it's the same folks that own the auto salvage, and it's a partnership. The three point six acre lot, it's been on the market for a while, it's zone Hamlet neighborhood, so pretty much residential or agricultural, it's been seen a number of times, in fact, I went out and met some people there to talk about it. And on that day, about ten huge dump trucks went by, and there, we were getting blasted with sand.
I've shown it to clients looking for a residential property, and it's like, it's a construction site, essentially, you know, feels like, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, so I, I think that might, that's gonna be an interesting one, um, I think it, it, so that one's gonna, I just got the application in last week, and I'm talking with them this coming week, just about their proposal to to rezone it to commercial, cause the properties next door that they own are commercial, I can pull them back.
Is that the one that they, at one point, we were looking at?
Sunbeam.
Some, yes, yes.
It's not the same lot.
Okay.
It's, it's like, so you, if you're looking at, it's to the right of where the highway department is.
Um, yeah, and so there's properties that are zone commercial just going up Hornbrook past the highway driveway, there's two.
Like something you get that.
Yeah, it's on the other side.
And so they wanna rezone this property commercial, I think we would definitely want the highway, well, it would ultimately go to the town board, um, but the highway department should probably weigh in about that too, cause I know that, I had talked to Keith about um, a business going there, and if they would, if they could use the, the highway road, it's just creating less access points on the road. Um, and they were that in favor of that, so I think the highway should just be involved in this review.
Yeah.
So there is a house that it, this property circles, so I think they might have something to say about that, um. There's wetland down a significant part of it, so I don't think they have a they don't, they don't have a proposal, a site plan, they don't have a buyer, I don't think.
No, I think that if if it was commercial, I think they do.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not involved with it, but I spoke to the, the eight, the listing agent, like, just asking a question about it, otherwise, cause she was saying, like, yeah, we can't sell it because no one wants to, like, build a house there, but there is commercial interest, I guess. We'll see, I mean, maybe they'll, that person will be long gone.
You know, it it was, it's, that's a rumor that's too long, and it, but it it's a little too bad, because the, there's zone commercial that they own with warehouses.
Right.
Right.
Um, already, and there were some people that I talked to about commercial property for their contractor businesses.
Right.
And I said, well, there's a perfect warehouse, it's own commercial, permitted by right, you go move it in, but the listing price was like two hundred and seventy thousand for a three acre lot, and I, so maybe that's why they.
Well, anyway.
We're not rezoning. I could just see Jake, Jake's mind spinning, like, ooh, high volume.
So, so, so we'll probably see that come to the board, um. And, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll just leave it there for now, um, the the sewer project continues to roll along, we're just gathering information right now, we're still on that page, we are loosely, uh, we'd like to. Are loosely, uh, we'd like to, we haven't, we don't have a date yet, but. Have a date for a community meeting at the end of May and one at the end of June, one up here where we invite. Well, it'd be townwide notice, but, um, certainly mail notices to everyone in the Hamlet neighborhood here, and then down in West Dandee. And then hold a meeting down in West Dandee, maybe in June, or, you know, but one or the other up here, and then down in West Dandee, to just. Talk about what's next for this, for this sewer project consideration, um. I could talk more about that if you want, but otherwise, those are just sort of the general things that we're working on, so be safe.
All right. Sound good?
I put next month is as fun as this one was.
Yeah.
One last thing, we have the most wonderful recorder, I mean, can you imagine trying to.
All right, on that note, meeting adjourned, you can go home and celebrate your birthday.
Yay.